It's like the only TV show. Getting ready for the... Getting Shelley's directed director. Three, two, one. Go, ready?
Alright, it's six thirty. I'm going to call this meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission of McLennan-Chisholm to order. First, I'd ask everybody to join me in prayer. Dear God, we bless that you will... We pray that you will bless us and guide us through this meeting. Help us to be... Have productive discussions that broaden our perspectives. Help us to resolve any disputes gracefully and with principles that we can agree upon. Help us to generate good plans that are practical, sustainable, and easily implemented. Guide us towards the best way to accomplish our... Accomplish our goals. In your name we pray. Amen. You will stand with me? Yes, sir. Pledge to be master of America.
To the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You will? Now, I pledge to say that.
On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
God bless Texas. Alright. I thank the citizens who were here tonight and to my fellow commissioners. It's good to see everybody. Okay, so I'll move on to the agenda and item number three, citizens' comments. No one signed up? Anyone in the audience who wishes to make a comment? Sir?
Mike Hatcher, 175 East FM 550. The only question I had, this looks like a great neighborhood, one-acre lots, all that. The side yard setbacks at ten foot is pretty... That means houses could be up to twenty, you know, only twenty foot apart. That's pretty close for such a one acre. So, just curious on why the developer would ask for a ten-foot side setback. I just... That's it.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wish to make a comment? Okay, with that, I will close citizens' comments and move on to agenda item number four. Consider the approval of the minutes of the eighteenth of July Planning and Zoning meeting. Ask for a motion. Okay? And a second?
Second.
Alright. Any comment about the minutes? Any edits want to be made? Alright?
Yes.
Alright, I will call for a vote then to approve the minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, carries unanimously. Move on to item number five, Statement Regarding Development Process. I've been trying to ask my fellow commissioners to indulge me here. I worked with the city administrator and had Mr. Coker review. I have some thoughts I just want to make sure I share that helps us understand what we're doing here within planning and zoning and more importantly helps the citizen re-understand the process. I sort of think there's misunderstanding that's out there about what we need to do to address the current situation with water, but more importantly, I think, our overall development scheme here within McLennan-Chisholm. So, first, I want to remind everybody McLennan-Chisholm's a general law city under... Under Texas law, and we follow chapters 211 through 213 in the Texas code to address our building and development. And for any development, there's no... Tends not to be any single acceptable solution that does not involve some type of negotiations and trade-offs to achieve best outcomes. And what I mean by that is, we're part of a process. The city planners are part of the process. City staff's part of a process. And it's our responsibility to help work with city staff and negotiate... And with the developer as we move through the process. So if there's something you don't like in the... Concept document or any follow-on plaits, it's... It's our obligation to help work through that with the developer and with city staff. So, for us, it's critical our review and decisions be based both on Texas code, our comprehensive plan, and the city ordinances. So inside of city limits, I think everybody understands, we have a tremendous number of controls and levers. In the ETJ, outcomes are based on Texas code, our inter-local agreements, and of course, our code ordinance. So for any new developments, everything starts with the comprehensive plan, which is why we have to... A document we have to become very familiar with because that provides a vision of what our citizens want us to be when we develop. It expresses who we are and what we want to be, and it provides a guidance for development and redevelopment of any areas. And the purpose of the comp plan is to provide sound development, provide and protect public safety and welfare, preserve the characteristics that are valuable to our community while creating a vision for development, and to help guide the community towards a future envisioned state. And so the specific objectives then for the comp plan are identify the desired and essential services, ensure development is using both public and private investment strategies, and manage growth. And then guides our future land use and to minimize conflicts between existing and future land. So as we consider changes within zoning, et cetera, we should always understand that within context of all the surrounding properties or land. And then finally, ensure we have data-driven decisions and the rationale that is making our decisions that will benefit the overall community. So that within the comprehensive plan, a future land use plan depicts how this... How this city has envisioned it should develop. Commercial and residential, mobility and roads, topography, landscaping, vegetation, use of floodplain, the desired densities. And each area is depicted that includes zoning or the use of a master plan, community or plan developments. We're going to discuss one of those tonight. So it's important to remember the comprehensive plan does not constitute zoning regulations or established zoning districts. That's... That's a... So the comprehensive plan is the vision, and then as we move through zoning, we move into the reality of how things are zoned. Zoning regulations then must be adopted according to Texas law with the comprehensive plan and are designed to lessen the congestion in streets, secure safety from fire, panic, and other dangers, promote health and general welfare, provide adequate light and air, provide... Prevent the overcrowding of land, avoid undue congestion of population, or facilitate the adequate provisions of transportation, water, sewer, schools, parks, and other public requirements. So zoning regulations must be uniformed for each class or kind of building in a district, but the regulations may vary district to district within zoning. And regulations should be adopted with reasonable consideration, among other things, for the character of each district and the particular sustainability for particular uses, with the view of conserving the value of the building and encouraging the most appropriate use of the land in the municipality. So zoning guides the boundaries that are for those developed by zones. That includes the things we talked about, infrastructure, physical features, the purpose of the... Of the zone... Of the use of land. And zoning is a specific definition for the land by category or activity. And no building is... No building is permitted upon... Without an approved plat. And no plat can be approved without appropriate zoning. And the development then is a process that starts with the comp plan and leads to zoning and then leads to plating. And the only exception to that would be in five acres or larger where a building can... There's no building permits required if it's a large five acre... Yes, sir. Yeah, building permits required. It's just...
That's correct.
Just... Just, yeah. The current building permits required. It's just how the plating sequence works out. But the point is, most of the... Most of the plating we're going to do is going to be on smaller. You know, that's typically, we're going to be in one acre or similar kinds of situations. The plaits themselves become legal documents, they're filed with the county clerk. Chapter 10 of our subdivision regulations governs the process. And compliance with the ordinances is how we make recommendations to the city council for approval, approval with conditions or denial. So every time we're making a recommendation, it needs to be specifically around those items in code. It... We really have to be careful not to go beyond that. I won't stifle anybody's conversation, but when it comes time for actual voting, we have to constrain ourselves and our thoughts to that, the law, to make sure we're properly... Making the proper decisions. And plaits are approved in two steps. The preliminary plat that includes a description and purpose, existing features, new features for a subdivision. This includes roads, water, wastewater, storm runoff, easements, number of other physical features, including the number of dwelling units. So, you know, the city administrator and I had a conversation, the importance of the preliminary plat cannot be understated because the preliminary plat is probably the one that's going to give us the most understanding of what that land is going to look like and how it's going to develop. That's a... That's a critical step. It can be still changed to the final plat, but it's much more difficult because now the developer is... You know, we're... Has to start significantly changing plans. Excuse me. A preliminary plat, once approved, is good for six months, and then it expires unless the applicant requests an extension for another six months. So even no plat is permanent, right? It's... It has to be acted upon. No preliminary plat, right? And the final plat then governs, it can include all the final design features, and it's valid for one year, and that can be extended for a year. And the final plat doesn't become a final record until construction is complete, has passed all inspections, and is accepted by the city. And for new developments, this includes fire suppression and the fighter... Firefighting infrastructure. It must be operational prior to the construction of residential or commercial structures. So the firefighting capability has to be in place, right pressure, right infrastructure, and there's a whole sequence that goes through to ensure that. And of course, the fire chief is... Or fire marshals responsible for verifying that to the... To city staff and to the city planner. And so the reason is, I want to do that as a topic that's in mind, of course, everybody's concerned about water right now. And adequate water service to their homes and construction. And a lot of loose talks going around about over... Overdevelopment, what needs to be done. And my thought on that is, as part of the plating process, the developer provides a certification and modeling analysis to the city that is for applicable water supply, which demonstrates the supplier's ability to provide adequate water, right? So it's part of the plating process. So we're not going to... A competent developer is not going to develop without water already established, how that water's going to be provided, provisioned to that area. And in... And then occupancy of new residents, once they're completed, isn't allowed until the water lines are in place and potable water is compliant with TCEQ standards to that structure. So again, another safeguard to stop a building from being built that doesn't have... It's not going to have water. And the difficulty is because our city currently depends on three private corporations to deliver water. We are dependent on them to properly inform both the citizens... The city, the citizens, and developers, or the capabilities to provide service, and any new development or construction. And while we, members of this... Of this body, including city staff, should be skeptical and thoroughly examine any new requests, our doubts alone do not constitute a legal basis to deny an application if the developer is confident that they have a pathway to have water and they've been certified by a provider. So we have to... I mean, we can ask hard questions, do our due diligence, but it's critically important for the... For the city that we don't over-set bounds in denying applications based on something other than facts and data. And the other thing I'll remind everybody is, development takes years to complete. And so at each step of these... Of the process, plans, as they're developed, are going to be evaluated. You know, a zone... An area can be zoned, and it could sit dormant for a significant period of time, years, before the actual plating process would start. So as we act, tonight, we're going to act on a zoning request. That zoning request, and that will include a concept plan. And so we are approving the concept plan and the zoning concurrently as we think about that. But the whole questions of final plating, the specifics, the very detailed specifics on infrastructure are yet to be decided. And we'll have the developer, I believe, is going to talk to us so he can ask any kinds of questions. But as we think about the zoning application, that's the... That's what we're constrained to, that future land use and how that will be utilized. And is it compliant with the comprehensive plan? And is it compliant with the future desired land use within the context of the city? So, Mr. Coker, anything you want to add there? Clarify?
Just on the final plat, for it to become permanent, after all the inspections are done and accepted, and all the improvements reviewed and accepted by the city, then it has to be recorded, and that's when it becomes permanent. And the only way to change it then is to vacate it for model.
Now, I'll clean that... Thank you, sir. I'll clean that all up and provide that to Shelley, and she'll put it in the minutes so each of you has that. You know, it's a... I realize, as you read through the comprehensive plan, read through the ordinances, God forbid, start having to read through the Texas chapter... Various chapters of Texas code, how to connect all the dots together. Huh? That is... I... I had a little insomnia last night, so I was able to especially get through chapter 211, which was a little more challenging than the others. So anyway, I just wanted to do that. Now, any of my fellow commissioners have any questions they want to ask?
So I have one point of clarification. You mentioned in pre-plating process that we're either suggesting that a modeling part be done, or is it actually part of what the current standards are for pre-plating? So the chairman had mentioned that as part of the pre-plating process, I thought the word he'd used, that he suggested that modeling be performed. And I'm... That's what I'm trying to figure, is this a suggestion, or is this actually part of the city's process?
The city requires... Plating is basically a two-step process, preliminary and then final. The preliminary usually is kind of the vision and the layout that we're going to be looking at. The real civil engineering, though, has not mostly been done. They will have envisioned what they're going to do, and they've spent a lot of money before they get a preliminary plat for your consideration. But it's not anywhere close to what they're going to do over the time. But it is required. It's not a... It's not an option. They shall provide a preliminary plat. There is one exception in our code, and it's allowed by state law. A minor plat can have the preliminary plat and the final plat consolidated, so you'll only see it come through one time instead of twice. But that's just a... Those are on very rare occasions, small subdivisions that were already planted, that they're modifying, you know, removing a lot line or consolidating two lots into one lot. Those kinds of things can be done as one document. It comes through basically as a final plat. Generally, for ninety-nine point nine percent of the things you're going to look at, preliminary plat, which is the concept, and then a final plat. When it comes to plating, do I get anywhere close?
Almost. What I'm trying to get at is, as the chairman pointed out, to put back into this a perspective of, let's look at it from a data point of view, is there a level of modeling that is being done as part of that plating process? Sorry. To ensure that what they are telling us is actually true?
Not that I'm aware of. On the... On the city side, we're reviewing what they have submitted in accordance with our codes and with our comprehensive plan. I think it is probably smart, if you're a developer, to model potential outcomes and options for, gosh forbid, that the commission says, "No, we think that the street frontage is not enough," or whatever it happens to be. They need to be thinking about what they're going to... In fact, we... No. Recently, the Maraki case, you know, remember that the... They wanted to use the thoroughfare plan of the cities, but the ILA with Kaufman County said that they have to use the county's thoroughfare plan, and they do have to use that. And they had modeled it... They had modeled it as though it were the city's thoroughfare plan, and they're having to revise their entry on that now to comply with the county's requirements, not ours.
I think, Chris, let me... Let me try to answer that question. So as I look at our chapter 10 subdivision regulations, in the annex is where that language you're seeking is located. And it deals with all of the various infrastructure pieces that are required for development. And under water service, it talks about the size of lines, et cetera, but it also specifically calls out a water distribution modeling analysis should be performed by the applicant's water supplier and submitted to the city engineer for review and approval prior to submittal of the final plat. So the... So I think what I'm going to interpret with your question is, we should be asking if that has been done.
Yes, chairman. And then the next question comes back to, okay, now we have a modeling. Is there any certification or standardization of that model that you can compare it against to see how accurate that model is predictably? I hate going engineer on the better world.
No. I mean, it's important, and our... Again, I... This is not about what has been done in the past, but as we, as the commission, move forward, we just... These are the kinds of questions we should be asking. And that's why it's important. I learn every... I learn something new every time I reread the ordinance. It's like, just... I'm a slow learner sometimes, but I'll go through and reread it.
Not a slow learner.
And so as we consider all of these applications in the future, we just... We should do that. I just want to make sure we're asking the right questions at the right point.
And I agree. That's the reason I was clarifying, it was part of the pre-plating process. That's where we're going to catch it and ask for some database analysis. That's fine. I just would like to know if that's going to be part of a process, or if that was actually ingrained as part of the required process. Here, the way the language reads is that it is a nice ask, but it's not a requirement. But, you know, I think that's something that would say deserves scrutiny.
Right. Yeah. And I... I mean, it could... And we're... Waters decide hot topic now. I would have the same conversation about any number of...
Yes. Traffic, utilities, all the above.
All that.
And it goes back to another question about not knowing what these models look like. Going back to what's the certification process, or, you know, what's the predictive analysis that's going on, how accurate these models are putting out? Or is it just, this is what the developer's coming at us with, and it's the smoke and mirrors behind the sofa?
We're going to have at the end, we're going to have an opportunity to talk about future agenda items.
Okay.
That might be a great opportunity if we want to have established some sort of dialogue with the city engineer, understand more about his processes.
Yes, I'd love to be a part of that.
We can do that. But let me talk about water for just a second. We don't require the certification at the preliminary plat for water supply and... And fire flow. We do require that, coincident with the application for final plat, and it is validated by our city engineer.
Yeah.
The modeling that they use, he reviews that to make sure that it complies with the requirements. And then the fire chief, who is also our fire marshal validates.
Right. And that's... And that's when construction, I mean, it all coincides prior approvals, pre-date construction.
I agree. Catching it at the final plat, not easy, quality check. If you can catch it back at the preliminary plat, adjustments can be made, saves the developer time, saves the city time.
Well, and is there... I don't want to get ahead of ourselves, but it's great points, and I think it's also, if it's an opportunity to improve our subdivision regulations, it's a great idea.
Yes, our process.
Right. Exactly.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Any other comments, questions? Okay. Alright. Thank you. So moving on, item six, public hearing, and this is to deal with the zoning associated with the area around here at city hall and the consideration that was made. There was a minor mistake here in the agenda. That... But that, remember, last meeting, that we just approved those minutes, that is a... We held open that public hearing, and it now continues until the nineteenth of September. And that's when we will close that hearing and take further consideration for addressing the development of legacy. Thank you. So we don't have any action on six. It's just carries forward as the agenda item. So then I'm going to move on to item number seven, and this is, consider the approval for an application requesting a zoning change for the agricultural zoning district that provides a lot size of two and one and a half acres to a planned development district, ridge point for a development of an eighty-three, single-family residential lots with a minimum of one... Minimum lot size of one acre of land. The property location is nine hundred... Ninety-nine point five four four acres of land located generally across FM 550 from McLennan-Chisholm City Hall, thirteen seventy-one West FM 550 McLennan-Chisholm, McLennan-Chisholm, Texas, Rockwell-Cad, property ID 10767. So we heard the public hearing last time it closed. I'll turn it now to Mr. Coker for staff comments.
Well, commissioners, the staff has reviewed this application and believe it complies with the comprehensive plan. Now, there's a couple of questions that I want to... Or at least a couple of issues that I want to clarify for the commission and for the audience as well, because we're looking at a planned development district. And when I say district, it's a zoning district. Now, the city has a number of zoning... Now, the city has a number of zoning districts. We've got agricultural district, which is the zoning across the street. We have SF one-point-five, SF two-point-five, SF five. Then you get into the commercial ones over there. So those are all zoning districts, and a planned development district is a zoning district. So if you, if you hear the words planned development district, that's not a PID, that's a PDD. Because a PID is a public improvement district, which is not zoning. PDD is a zoning district, just like agricultural zoning district, or any other zoning district that we've got, office, general business, residential. Okay? I wanted, I wanted to make that clear, because I know that sometimes it is confusing to the audience. Second thing is, is the comprehensive plan has recommended that this be a master, that that ninety-nine point five acres be a master plan community. What you have in front of you is a master plan community. We do not have a one-acre zoning district. But one acre is the minimum lot size that is allowed within the corporate limits of McLendon-Chisholm for onsite sanitary sewer facilities. In the county, it's one-point-five acres, outside in our ETJ, but in the city, we allow one acre. And that's why you can have a master plan community with onsite sanitary at one acre. There are other ones that are much smaller, but they have off-site sanitary sewer capacity. So the staff has reviewed this. Oh, there's one other thing. If you get into the comprehensive plan where it talks about the desired components of a master plan community, one of the things that they desire is a hundred-and-fifty-foot lot front. Most of the lot frontages in this subdivision are a little less than a hundred-and-fifty. It is not a requirement. It is a desired solution to the design. And when you take a look at the concept plan, you can see that there's at least one lot that is smaller, I think a hundred-and-thirty-five-foot lot width. But the rest of them are all a couple of feet short of a hundred-and-fifty feet. It's not a requirement. You know, interesting thing that is, I think, a dichotomy, is state law says that zoning shall, not may, shall comply with your comprehensive plan. But our comprehensive plan in this case is kind of flexible, and it says it's desired, not required. Make sense? Okay. I can answer any questions you have.
You can see that I can't. Thank you, Adrian. Oh, man, that's loud.
Yeah, it's loud.
My name is Russell Phillips. I live at five-two-one Moraine Way in E. Thank you for the opportunity to get before you tonight to discuss our project that we propose. Sorry I missed the last meeting, but I appreciate your time. First of all, I've done a lot of development in the area, and I want to maybe put your mind at ease. I would understand if I'm in your shoes. I would never approve a development right now if it's RCH Water, because there's no taps, there's none available, and we don't know when it'll happen. So I understand it, and believe me, to invest in the community and invest building out lots and not knowing I'm going to have water, it's the number-one cardinal sin. You know, you don't want to be in a position where you don't have that. The great thing is about this property is that we are right across from City Hall. And right now, High Point serves this area along with the piece across. And we have already been to them. We've already had a study done. They can supply and will supply the water, and they have plenty of water to be able to supply the development. So I think you normally require us to, I think it was, was it a preliminary plat to provide that? Listen, we'll do it at preliminary plats for you guys. Just go ahead and get it in your hands so that you have the study and you know that it can be served. And again, I know that that probably is the hottest topic. And I have a long history with RCH, and I just will tell you that we're very happy to be in touch. So anyway, I'm trying to be as, anyway. But we really love the piece of property across the street. And what I wanted to point out to you is, as Mr. Coker said, is if you look at the way the layout is, and you can kind of see at the back of the layout you're provided, the width of the lots in the property adjacent to us are a hundred-and-twenty-five feet wide. And so what we've tried to do is meet the PD as best we can, or excuse me, meet your current zoning and request a hundred-and-fifty-foot wide lots. If you'll look at the very first lot where the road comes into this property from their property, that one is the one that's actually, and if I'm not mistaken, you can correct me, Cardinal, but I think it's a hundred-and-thirty-nine feet, I believe is that lot. So it's the only one less than a hundred-and-forty, and sixty percent of the lots are at a hundred-and-fifty or higher. Okay? So the average, some of them are over a hundred-and-fifty, depending on how the roads laid out and how you would try to define your lots. The rest of them can be anywhere in the one-forties, some are one-forty-nine, one-forty-eight, one-forty-seven. So if you take a road, let's say the interior lots, and you've got eight of those, and they may be two feet off, you're looking at sixteen feet total off. So we really were trying to, the only reason why we came with the PD was basically trying to accommodate how we tie into the neighborhood behind us, and then move forward with that, laying the lots out, and also the width of the land kind of sometimes restricts you a little bit to where you're trying to get the layout to work, you know, the best you can in order to meet what's asked of us, and that's what we tried to do. But the reason why we didn't go straight zoning is before that transition and trying to get the layout to work as close as we can. Everything else, I think we comply, and I've had a couple of, several people actually ask about the ten-foot side yard. And I will tell you guys, I never do a one-acre lot with a ten-foot side yard. So I apologize. It should be twenty-five foot on each side, and we're happy to make that change now. So thanks for bringing it up. I've had a couple of others bring it up as well. So mostly, I think whenever that's done, it's always been twenty-five. I think at Kingsbridge, when I did that, was one, was twenty-five foot as well, and they've developed out very nice. So that gives you a good hundred feet or so width on the home to be able to spread out, and I think still have a lot of space between your neighbors. So, but I'm here to answer any questions you have, and happy to take the now, if you want.
Any questions by the commission?
I just, I have, I have one comment, and this has been a comment of mine to city staff for a number of times. And historically, since I've been on P and Z, we receive preliminary plats that were, or final plats that we were asked to approve and send on to city council, and it has a number of conditions. And I really, I hate to see plats come in with all of these conditions, that we have to prove this thing with a condition based on this, this, and this. I'm not saying that, that your plats will have that, but I encourage you to make it very complete so that we don't come in when we see this and we have to pass it along to city council that says, we approve this plat with this condition, with this condition, with this condition, with this condition.
Okay.
Mr. Coker and I have had some serious discussions about this. We differ on some of these opinions. But I'm encouraging you to have your plat complete as much as possible so that we don't have to consider all these conditions and all these conditions, because then that puts extra burden on our city's engineer, on our city staff, to follow up, to make sure these conditions are met. It also puts responsibility on city council. And so I'm asking, please, when you submit your plats, minimum amount of conditions that we have to approve. It's kind of following up with what you was talking about, Chris, with your modeling of the plat. We would like to see a plat, and not five to seven conditions that we approve, which we have to have, which we've been asked to do before. So just, that's my opinion. You hear that?
Telling the engineer now, so, but no.
Because if it has too, because if it has too many conditions, if I can find an ordinance or something, I will vote to disapprove it, and you'll have to go back and do it again. I'm tired of seeing all these plats with all these conditions.
And I believe, by the way, if there's any area that we don't comply normally with your zoning, on a one-acre lot or what have you, let me know. I mean, we're happy to make those changes. Those few slight lot changes on this were the only thing we really came for. So if there's something that we're missing, and, you know, again, we're happy to implement that and keep it from being some exception.
Any other comments, questions? Okay. Thank you, sir.
That's it. Thank you.
I'll just remind the commission that Mr. Phillips has done some beautiful properties here in McLendon-Chisholm, both Kingsbridge and Mayor Vista would be two examples. So we thank him for enhancing the beauty and livability in our community. I know at least one commission member that lives in Kingsbridge. Right, Tom? Nice, nice place, living in Kingsbridge. You like it? Yeah. Thank you. Sorry to make a point, call anybody out.
I would have one comment.
So with that, I'll.
I would have one comment.
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, Mr. Russell, sit down. It's not necessarily directed at you, but just directed, written largely on the record is that. I agree with your statements. We would make things, we would make decisions based on facts that are presented to us within the law that governs us, and they can't be made in a motion. The more data you get, the more to us, the more that we can make those kinds of intelligent decisions, and we can work together. Because I think that's the point, is that we want the community to develop and to move forward. But at the same time, we want to make sure that we're that safeguard, that make sure that the community is being best served. And having the data to be able to make those decisions intelligently, remove that kind of bias that one might have from a motion. So let us, you know, work with us, work with you. That's all it asks.
Well said. All right. Any others? And with that, I will ask for a motion.
I would like to make a mo, or I'll make a motion to approve of a zoning district change from AG, which is agricultural zoning district, that provides for lot sizes of two and one-half acres to a PD, which is a planned development district for Ridge Point Estate, for the development of an eighty-three single-family lot, each with a minimum one lot, lot size of one acre, with a modified side lot distance of twenty-five feet. Does this application then conform with the comprehensive plan?
Thank you. Do I have a second? Alter.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? And with that, I'll call for vote. All in favor? To show that is unanimous as well. Okay, moving on to item eight, or seven-point-two, future consideration for future agenda, or consideration for future agenda items and guidance to staff. I ask if fellow commissioners have anything they want, want to bring forward.
So a couple of things, Chairman. I think from last week's meeting, or last month's meeting, rather, we had a couple of actuarials that came out of that with the city. And I know that we did not set any kind of suspense stake on those, but we'd like to hear from the city about where we are in progress of moving forward on those.
Mr. Coker?
Remind me of what they are.
Okay, so the first, so the first one was for the attorney to attend the next meeting or providing memo for the tools or options of development laterally in ETJ. The second was for the city planner to provide recommendations for chaplain ordinance changes in the Texas legislation. They have been ongoing for recent. The third was for the city planner to provide information related to the heritage development and what is the thoroughfare, thoroughfare plan for them.
Okay, on the subdivision regulations, I have drafted a series of amendments to the subdivision regulations. Part of my responsibility is to cue those with our comprehensive plan. One of the recommendations out of the comprehensive plan is for our subdivision regulations to be coincident with the conference plan. Just about there. There is one recommendation that takes the visuals for the thoroughfare plan out of the last comprehensive plan, the twenty-fifteen comprehensive plan, and inserts them into the modified new comprehensive plan. I'm doing that now, so you'll probably see that set of recommendations at your next planning and zoning commission meeting. As far as city attorney, I wish you were able to call me, but he doesn't. I think there was one other thing on your list, Mr. Freeze.
Well, on that first, on the city attorney, I'll take direction to contact Mr. Hall and express what we're looking for.
What was the last name?
Actually, I think it was the thoroughfare plan, but I think it was addressed in the, what we just talked about, and with the developer. The question, I think that was related to the question that came up about the surface road that passes through the Ridge Point development and connects to the, behind it. That is specifically driven by our thoroughfare plan to create that.
And I have talked to the current builder, not the developer, but the current builder of the heritage subdivision, and they are, they think that's a good idea, as long as there are some traffic calming, so it's not a straight shot from pulling for five-fifty.
Hey, what, and what kind of traffic calming are we thinking of?
Be roundabouts, forty-five caliber, forty-five caliber.
Yeah, I mean, I can think of a number of things, but do we, do we know what that will look like, or do we?
We do not. We do not.
So perhaps it would be useful at some point to have, because that is under construction, right? So that's, that's.
It is under construction.
And with Mr. Russell, as he begins his plating process, to introduce that into the plat.
Yes, we will work together with Altera, who is the builder now. And they're doing phase one. That's going to be a three-phase process, and this connection will be in the third phase. So it gives us some design, some design time to put in. I like, frankly, I like roundabouts. A lot of people don't. I like roundabouts. They slow you down, they make you look at what you're doing, and the actual opportunities for accidents are, and speeding are reduced a lot. Whatever that happens to be would not be in this property across the street, because that's just about a hundred-and-twenty-five feet long. It's going to be on that third phase of heritage, but we're going to work that out, and when you see that plat, it'll have something in it.
And that's expected around the end, the plan for the third phase.
They haven't told me when that's going to be.
That address all your concerns?
The three actions, yes, and then to revisit, where we discussed earlier about the potential of revising the, or adjusting, as you said, the current process and subdivision requirements, and looking at how we move that forward.
Okay. So, Mr. Coker, I think that's your action. So bring that, Vega, bring that recommendation back to.
I'll do it.
The next, the next meeting as well. And for Shelley, that would be to look at our subdivision regulations, to move forward in the plating process, the various engineering studies, especially water. Right, that's your.
I think it's, water is on everybody's mind right now, but it is utilities, traffic, fire, it's a lot of stuff. Water's on everybody's mind.
Right. It might be useful at that point, maybe to have at the next meeting if the, if the city engineer could come, and that way we can, if you have any questions, specific questions, the city engineer, that might be useful. Do you, no, I mean, do you, I'm asking, I'm asking the commission if that would be of use, because there is cost to that. It does, we have to. would be of use, because there is cost to that. It does, we have to, the city has to pay the engineer to be here. So.
I would love to hear the recommendations first, and it's with me. Give us just a digest.
One of the things we do, by the way, when I do these kind of things, city engineer gives me, I'm not an engineer, I'm a planner. He gives me the engineering components to this thing. So, the assembly that we've got is a combination of his stuff and my stuff, and then I sort through it for things that are clearly not right, and then add things like what you've asked for, Commissioner Freeze, you know, like bringing the water certification for the preliminary. That's a good idea. That's easy for me to add.
All right.
Yeah. And I'm talking about holistic. Again, water's just what's on everybody's mind right now, but it's just part of planning better in the future.
No, I agree. I agree completely.
That's all.
All right. Thank you, sir. Any other future agenda item considerations? All right. With that, I will move on to the final item and entertain a motion for adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. This meeting is adjourned.
Good job.
All right. Now, picture.